The Pine Bluff -- we do not have these speakers on agenda items, so the Pine Bluff City Council meeting for February the 7th, 2015 is hereby called to order. May we have roll call, please?
I'm Brian.
Here.
I'm Stan.
Yeah.
I'm Alvin Walker.
I'm Paul.
I'm Brian.
Here.
I'm May.
Here.
I'm Hope.
Here.
I'm Brown.
Here.
Each of you have a copy of the minutes from January the 20th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and properly second that the minutes as presented will be approved, and floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Onto committee reports, Ways and Means, Alderman Brummett.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to encourage everybody to pull your mics up close. We've had some people say they can't hear us sometimes. My mama watches it on TV, and she says, "Sometimes you can't hear me."
Excuse me, Bill, you just don't talk loud at all.
I don't?
I'm glad we got your mother on our side.
I'll try to do better. Ways and Means Committee, minute prior to the meeting, we have two budget adjustments that were in the packet. One of them is concerning the carryover budget adjustments. These are primarily grants that weren't completed or projects that were not completed in 2014. The need is still there, and therefore, we're going to carry -- the recommendation is to carry forward these monies to these accounts to complete these projects. I move we accept this carryover budget adjustment for 2014.
Sir.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $1,360,850.67 be carried over as an adjustment for 2015. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have another one which concerns year-end budget adjustments. These are adjustments that need to be made toward the end of the year to cover various expenses that were either over budget, under budget, and so on, to make the budget balance for the end of the year. I move we accept this budget adjustment for year-end budget adjustments.
Sir.
It's been properly moved and second that the 2014 year-end budget adjustments be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Each of you Aldermen were presented with a list from the Collector's Office concerning people that are delinquent on their business licenses. Effective February the 10th, you know, we voted to give them an extra 30 days. Effective February the 10th, citations will be given to these various individuals. I would encourage you to look over the list, and if there are people that you have any direct relationship with that you could help us to make those collections before then, I'd ask that you please do that. Mayor, if you've got anything you want to add?
We did have a few to come in and make arrangements for past due payments. We're really glad that they did do so, but we still have some work in front of us. So, if you know anyone on this list, please encourage them, contact them to do so. Yes, sir.
So, in line E, those that are blank are the ones that are still owed?
No, all, everyone on this list owes.
Well, in line E, you got paid in full, paid in full, paid one year. The ones that are blank over in E, are they the ones that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at F. Yes, you're correct. Yes. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. That's good.
Okay. Thank you. But if you do know of someone, please encourage them to come in, and it may be that they didn't receive a notice, we're not really sure. So, if there's a discrepancy, let us, give us time to clear it up if there's a problem.
I want to ask, did they post this in the, list this in the newspaper?
And also, we have not. We have not. And the reason for that, this is the first time that we have had a legitimate, what we call a legitimate list to work from. So, we might have an error on here, and we don't want to post it and do damage to anyone's business. We would prefer to handle it this way. Now, the next time around, we probably will. I'm assuming.
Yeah, I'll ask that in the future, that the, starting at the end of the first quarter, that the Ways and Means Committee be presented with a list of past dues so we could help them work through them each quarter. And so, we'll be working for that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid.
Sir.
It's been properly moved and second that the bills for the city be paid. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I conclude Ways and Means.
Thank you, sir. Ordances and resolutions?
Before we hit and walk through, I'd like to turn it out to you a little bit specifically to try and set up.
Okay. Yes, sir, thank you.
There's a settlement conference held on Friday, January 30th, involving the case of Brenda Jones versus the City of Pine Bluff. There was a settlement agreement that was reached. I'm going to read that agreement, and I'll need a motion to accept the terms of the agreement. Number one, the defendants will receive a full release from plaintiff Brenda Davis Jones, including her claim for attorney's fees. Number two, plaintiff will dismiss her lawsuit with prejudice. Number three, plaintiff will receive $350,000 as follows. $58,000 designated as back pay to be paid through the city's payroll system. Plaintiff will be issued a 1099 at the end of the year for the balance of the money. The $350,000 will be paid 50% by the city and 50% by the Arkansas Municipal League. Number four, the city will provide a neutral job recommendation for Ms. Jones in the future. Number five, the release will contain language satisfactory to the city regarding Ms. Jones's obligation to inform her bankruptcy trustee of this settlement and her agreement to indemnify the city with regard to the claim of her trustee and to all or any part of the settlement funds. Number six, the city council members who vote to approve the settlement will sign a letter to Ms. Jones with the following text. "The City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas wishes to express our gratitude and sincere appreciation to Brenda Davis Jones for her service as Chief of Police for the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas during the 2010 through December 2012." Those are the terms.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the terms as read by a city attorney be approved. Any discussion?
Number five.
Number five.
The release will contain language satisfactory to the city regarding Ms. Jones's obligation to inform her bankruptcy trustee of this settlement and her agreement to indemnify the city with regard to the claim of her trustee to all or any part of the settlement funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
I'm Brian.
No.
I'm Stan.
I'm Alvin Walker.
I'm Paul.
I'm Brian.
I'm Hope.
I'm Brown. Aye.
I'm Brian.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the fortune that the city owes be come from undesigned funds left over from 2014 budget.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the monies for this to go towards the payment for Jones to come from undesigned funds. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ordances and resolutions, Alderman Brummett.
Yes, Mayor. Orders and resolutions, committee make the following recommendations. Number one will be read for the second reading. Two will be read for the second reading. Number three will be concluded. Four will be up for the first reading. Five, six, and seven are resolutions, and they will be concluded. Please read them.
Thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Brown Senior.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Brown Junior.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, sir. Public Works, Alderman May.
We're working towards getting to the world's kids. And we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're taking advantage of the opportunity to help them. And we're looking for discussion. And we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And I still want to mention, I think, I'm a citizen of the United States. And we're having to do some physical issues, and we're still pushing the city, and we're still being required, and we're doing our best to help the public services, to help the citizens. But we've got to be ready, to be able to do more, and to have a better way to do it. And we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to separate the different, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to help the citizens, and we're getting a rest, and we're trying to find a way to do a better thing. And we're looking to help the people, and we're looking to do what we can, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're looking to separate the different, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to help the citizens, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to help the citizens, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And I'm still working, probably working, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And I'm still working, probably working, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And I'm still working, probably working, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to help the citizens, and we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. And we're trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do.
Thank you, sir. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd.
I accept, I have a, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
A lot of moving on the table. Thank you. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Hope.
No report, Mayor, but at this time, it's okay. I'd like Mr. Doug Hales to bring us up to speed on Resolution Number Six.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The Pine Bluff Aviation Commission seeks to change the name of our airport from the Pine Bluff Municipal Airport to the Pine Bluff Regional Airport. Resolution is required by FAA to do so. Pine Bluff's Greiderfield serves not only, obviously, Pine Bluff, but all of the businesses in Jefferson County will have flights originating or arriving at Greiderfield when conducting business in actually in all the surrounding counties. So, our airport serves Pine Bluff, Jefferson County, and all of Southeast Arkansas. It is truly a regional airport. This name change is part of a strategic plan that the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission is creating for our airport that will help to market our airport in the future and take our airport into the future.
That's great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Administration, Alderman Steps.
I don't have a report, Mayor, but we have, 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 we have,[1303.12][1303.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1324.12][1324.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1352.12][1352.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1359.12][1359.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1366.12][1366.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1373.12][1373.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1380.12][1380.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1387.12][1387.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1394.12][1394.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1401.12][1401.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1408.12][1408.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1415.12][1415.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1422.12][1422.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1436.12][1436.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1443.12][1443.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1478.12][1478.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1485.12][1485.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1492.12][1492.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1506.12][1506.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1695.12][1695.12][S26, we have, 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 we have,[1786.12] uh, 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 uh,[1734.12]